Welcome everyone to tonight's school committee meeting. Today is Thursday, March first, two thousand and eighteen, and the meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV. If anyone would like a copy of the broadcast, feel free to reach out to a member of the school committee or the administration. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen regular session executive session? Motion from Scott, seconded by John, all those in favor? Next order of business is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do we have any announcements, correspondence? No announcements or correspondence?
Just, if I may, just want to recognize the, I don't think we had an opportunity to do this. Just want to recognize the Milford High School cheerleaders came back and competed, recently competed in the national championships down in Texas. They did extremely well, they actually ended up finishing third at nationals this year. So, so we want to recognize them and congratulate them on a job well done.
Great.
I'll throw one thing out there, Joe. We, this week we had a MasQ learning tour hosted here in Milford. And Jim was good enough to speak on behalf of the school committee and talk about some of the ways we've kind of moved technology forward in the Milford Public Schools. But we had educators ranging from technology integration teachers to superintendents who were touring our schools and learning about all the great things we're doing in terms of technology. And I've got to really congratulate Dr. Joseph and his team for pulling together a fantastic event. It really showcased, you know, all the great things we're doing in terms of devices and technology to support learning.
Great. Jim, anything to add on that?
It was excellent, actually. And I was very impressed with the turnout that we had. It was an amazing showcase for what we've done as far as like IT integration and IT roadmap. You know, Matt covered and Kevin covered everything from, you know, our one-to-one initiatives and how educational outcomes are influenced through technology, as well as where the district is going from an infrastructure perspective. So, I think everybody was very surprised and impressed, and I can't say enough about how Kevin and Matt pulled it off, so, thank you.
Good, great, thank you. Anyone else? Invitation to speak, is anyone here that would like to address the board tonight? Thank you, I know both of you have been here before, so you know the routine.
My name is Amelia Bontempo.
I'm Megan LaRocco, and we're both seniors here at Milford.
We're here to represent the student leadership of the high school, so.
So, recently, before winter break, we had a safety training at the high school. And in light of recent events, I think I can speak for both of us in saying that it was definitely good that we went over some of that stuff, just to know what to do in case anything were to ever happen here.
This was very much in-depth, and I think we speak for the entire school, it was very like eye-opening, especially afterwards, recent events that happened down in Florida. So, it was definitely like taking a step back and like, okay, we, we know what to do, or at least we know what, we know how to respond to the situation. So, that was very, very good. So, another thing we want to talk about is the foreign exchange trip. So, the, from Monday, the past two weeks, we had a group of students go to Spain for a foreign exchange trip, and to France and to Italy. So, I was, I came back from the Italian trip, and I had a wonderful time with all my friends. We stayed in Florence for two weeks. I like to give a shout-out to Ms. Elizabeth Alagretso, she planned the entire trip, and she was a warrior, because my group unfortunately, we got stuck in Paris for three days.
That sounds terrible.
It was, unfortunately, I spent more time in the Paris airport than I did in Paris itself. But Ms. Al was such a strong like person, she's like, you know, guys, we're gonna be okay, everything's gonna work out. And in the end, here I am, all in one piece, so it was, it was a great experience overall.
Also, winter sports are coming to an end. Right now, the boys varsity team is playing the first round of playoffs in Medfield, and the girls varsity team just got their first win in, I think, seventeen years against Burnco. And they play tomorrow night, if it doesn't get canceled, because of the snow.
Yeah, and then for the swim team, both the girls and boys team, we won Davenport League Champs this year, which is pretty awesome. We had a streak, the girls and the guys had a streak going for a couple of years, and unfortunately, last year we didn't make it, but this year we did, we're very proud of ourselves. Then coming up, we have a spring sports meeting on March fifth, so hopefully get a big turnout, as we did the fall and winter sports.
And spring sports will officially start on the nineteenth of March, so coming up very soon. And also, MHS Theater Workshop is putting on Cinderella, coming up in March, the sixteenth, seventeenth, and the eighteenth. They always put on great shows, so I'm sure this one will be great as well.
Yes, heard a lot of buzz about it, so I'm very excited. And then lastly, talking about tonight, is we have our senior lip dub coming up on next April sixth, which is also the day of junior prom. So, I'm sure we're gonna hear a little bit of complaining about hair appointments, being in conflict with makeup appointments. I don't know, hopefully it's all gonna work out well, but we didn't have one last year, so we're all very excited. And I hope the underclassmen will appreciate it and continue the little tradition that we have going on.
It's fun just to get some more school spirit in there, towards the end of the year, people get kinda tired.
It's a great excuse to have fun for the day and show school spirit. Yeah, that's all for tonight.
Oh, that was great, nice update. Any questions for them?
No, thank you ladies.
Thanks for the update, I appreciate it. All right, next order of business are the, the spring articles. Kathy, you gonna run this one?
We have submitted three articles, which do require the school committee's vote. The first article is for the annual housekeeping vending machine revenue. So, each month we receive commission, and it is deposited into the town's general fund. And then we go to town meeting and request that funding back to the district. And that warrant is in the amount of seven thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Why we do them all, Joe, as a whole, or individual vote?
Um, why don't we do, why don't we do individual votes?
Okay.
So, do we have a motion to accept that, motion from Joe, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
The second article submitted is for the proposed regulations that are right now, which would possibly impact our playground project for the, the summer build that we're planning, and we have gone to FinCom, they have supported us for the, for the project. However, it's come to light that Massachusetts and the ADA has proposed changes for accessibility to the playgrounds. We have submitted an article in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to secure funding, if in fact those regs do get passed prior to our construction of that playground.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the playground or, or article?
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, so the, the regulations, Joe and I had a conversation earlier, are due springtime?
There are hearings that are gonna happen for all of, anyone in Massachusetts who would like to attend. They have them all of March and the beginning of April each week, for any constituent that would like to attend, to hear and to maybe express concerns relative to the cost impact and what's being proposed. I don't know when the final decision will be made, we have not been notified of when the ADA may be making that vote. So, right now, they're in the informational cha- stage.
So, are you comfortable going to the Maytown meeting with a number, what if the numbers changes?
This number will be worst-case scenario for us.
Okay, okay.
I think what we had discussed is it would be provisional requests. So, in the event that, for whatever reason, it doesn't move forward, then we don't need the funding, right? Or if it does move forward, but it's a variation of what's proposed, and we only need half the funding, and that's all we would tap into.
And it says that in the request, it's, I wouldn't write it, it says, it's just making sure that we're compliant with it. So, it's really, it's, it's an earmarking for up to, for a spend of up to fifty thousand, just as any spending request comes up. Same thing we did with the, with the one-to-ones, where it was a spend up to, so, fine.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could maybe clear up some of this. What's, what's, what's in the proposed changes right now are the A, the Massachusetts State AAB regulations, which is Architectural Access Board, and it's referenced in, in the warrant for five twenty-one CMR. And those changes have been not on any set schedule, I think the last changes were from nineteen ninety-six. So, there, there's some proposed changes, and what a lot of people get, have trouble distinguishing from or between are AAB regulations, which are state regulations, and ADA regulations, which are federal regulations. So, with the state regulations, the proposed changes, we really don't know what the timeline will be. In a typical project, a building permit's required, and the AAB state regulations are enforced by the, the Department of Inspections. And so, whatever regulations were in place when you obtained your building permit is what you would be held to. This is a little different, because building permit may not be required for it, so there, there's some gray area. But, you know, a couple of, you know, ADA and AAB have been thrown around interchangeably, but they're not. Just to, just to make everybody clear here, and anyone listening at home, these are state regulations that are, where they're proposed changes. So, I just wanted to maybe clear up some of, some of those details.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So, do I have a motion to approve that article, motion from Mike, seconded by Jen, all in favor?
Our third article is replacing the refrigerator freezer at the high school, which is now forty-five years old. The current freezer refrigerator is constructed with wood materials. We did have it on our capital request as being a ask for the following year, twenty nineteen. However, Carla had some significant concerns that the refrigerator freezer was not gonna make it another year. And it's very important to maintain that constant temperature for the lunchroom, obviously, cooking all of our meals, so that the food is at the right temperature, so it's a health and safety concern. That request is in the amount of eighty-one thousand five hundred. I will say that we do have a proposed grant at the state level for twenty thousand. And again, it's the same concept. If in fact, we don't need all of the eighty-one thousand five hundred, if we do get the grant, we will obviously leave the twenty thousand dollars for the article to fall to the bottom line. But that does also require a vote of your approval.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just, I do see the write-up on here. I don't see anything referencing the request for the grant. Is that something that perhaps we should at least include within the detail of saying we've, we have done this? There's a, at least that there's, at least indicating when we go through, we're, we're giving the whole story of, we've applied for a grant, we're hoping for that it could be, you know, it could be up to twenty thousand dollars?
We have indicated that to FinCom, we've made them aware.
I would just say when we're presenting the warrant, if we can just include that in this, that way the people, town meeting on that.
Right, and we'll know the answer by then, Scott, so maybe we'll have good news when we go to the floor.
So, we have a motion to approve, motion from Joe, seconded by Jim, all in favor? All right, thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin, report of superintendent of schools?
Yeah, so I wanted to just have a conversation with the committee tonight on, it's gonna sound a lot more complex than it actually is. Alternative structured learning day programs, which I think in some communities, they describe it as blizzard bags, some people are using technology. And this is to provide alternative activities that students could potentially do at home, instead of taking the snow day. And so, what happens, what happens right now is basically, we take a snow day, we have a day at the end of the year. So, this year, I think we've had, was it three snow days or two snow days? Three snow days, so we've had three days at the end of the year. What, what I'm recommending, or what I would like to have a discussion about, I guess, is I'd like to put a group together to kind of explore this, to potentially pilot something for next year, where we might say, hey, the first snow day, we try kind of this alternative structured learning day program, get some feedback from all of our stakeholders, so students, families, teachers, and then see if it's something we potentially want to do permanently. What I've included in the packet is some examples of some communities who are currently employing these practices, as well as a memo from the Department of Education from Acting Commissioner Jeff Wolfson, on kind of the department's stance on this. And right now, the department's stance is that it's a local decision. And so, there's a number of districts across the Commonwealth who are either piloting it this year, or have been doing it for a couple of years. And we've got a lot of good information about some of the agreements they've made with the teachers' unions, who's responsible for what aspects of a particular project, what happens if you're using Chromebooks, if a student can't get online, what's the, what's the, you know, what's the protocol or policy there? And it kind of lays it all out, and so, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel on this one, although we're early in the process as a state in looking at these kinds of programs. But I feel like there's some really well-developed programs in about, I think I gave you like two or three, or maybe four examples of some of the information that I think Melrose, Ludlow, and maybe another district have, have, have been trying, either just this year or the last couple of years. And I know a number of districts locally are also looking at potentially piloting this for, for next year as well, and I think across the state. So, I've, you know, opened up for comments, I guess, or questions?
Just a quick question, if I may, then, so, just reading here, so I know that it's, if we were to do something like this and go forward with it, and again, I, I like the idea of sort of, you know, potentially testing and learning. What is the DESE, and this is what I was just trying to read on real quickly here. We still, based on this, it looks like we'd still have to make up the day anyways.
No.
We don't, because it just says, what it says is, it says that the commissioner has the approval for waivers, so what we would, we would then apply for a waiver?
No, that's for waivers when, like, remember a few years ago, we had all the ice storms?
Yeah, two thousand thirteen, that's when this all was passed, that's when it was changed.
Yeah, so that was, that would be an example of like a community requesting a waiver, like there were some towns that were just shut down for like a couple of weeks because like.
So, how do we get around the one-eighty mark?
So, the, basically, we're saying the time on learning, we're having an alternative structured learning day, is what we're proposing. And so, the commissioner, nobody at the state at this point has to approve anything, we just have to kind of have a plan in place where we can justify what we're doing on that particular day. And there are some examples of what some other communities have done, through a combination of technology, projects, and I think some hybrid of the two.
And DESE is saying, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll count that as a day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's a short answer.
That's what I was looking for, I like the short answer, that's good.
Would that apply to the pilot year?
Yes.
If it would?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think what we get from the pilot is we kind of get a sense, like, I think we go through like a winter, and, you know, try it once or twice, depending on what, you know, as a committee, we decide to do. And basically get feedback from, you know, families, teachers, and students, and kind of say, did this work, did it not work? If it didn't work, is it something we want to try in a different way, or do we want to, you know, scrap the idea completely, or do we want to say, hey? And I don't think I go beyond more than one or two days anyways, because I think, you know, obviously, being in school in front of a teacher and the social environment is, is the ideal situation. But I think we can get a lot of productivity that we may lose, when we lose a day, like say in January or February, and still meet a lot of those academic objectives that we have.
I just have a question, I didn't read the DESE guidelines as closely as I'm sure you have.
It's riveting.
Well, so, did you read anywhere in there, is there an expected amount of work, like a time allotment of work a student would do, do we equate to one school day?
Yeah, so my understanding is there's not like a minute-to-minute kind of equation, but I think your plan has to be reasonable.
Okay.
So, we can't say that like, you know, you're gonna have a kindergarten, every set of ABCs, boom, that's a school day.
Right.
But, but I think if you come up with some reasonable plans, what we probably do at the elementary level, and I'm just speculating right now, is have some kind of project developed that, you know, by grade, the students will complete. And at the secondary level, where students have access to Chromebooks, and they have them at home, they'd be able to kind of actually interact with their teachers during the day potentially.
So, what it says on the hours, I'm just reading them now, is it says, it just gives the minimum hours per year?
Yep, so nine hundred for elementary, nine ninety for secondary.
So, we basically just have to say, we'd have to, what we may have to do is assign.
We have to justify those hours.
An appropriate timeline, yeah, that basically says, we've assigned.
And again, I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you what an elementary, but like, it's like five hours, let's say, for an elementary school, and like five and a half hours for a high school.
So, I, I think in, you know, I, I think in concept, I like the idea. I, I think where my concern comes up is when we have things of this nature, it is taking away, in essence, of a school day, which our teachers have already made it abundantly clear, and Jen, you've seen this every single day, I'm sure, working in a school, where every minute is so precious, and you've shared the same thing with us, are we potentially sacrificing?
It breaks my heart when I have to call school off.
I know, I know it does, which is why you wait until six o'clock in the morning. So, you're welcome. So, the, I, I think that's one of my concerns. My other concern is we have, thinking about the demographics of our town, we have so many students that even in the case of snow days, may actually be home by themselves, where there may not be able to have, parents may not be able to give the additional support that's needed for those students. I think about the number of kids we have in IEPs, the number of students we have in some of our other specialized programs, the level of accommodations and support that those students need, are we potentially putting those, adding additional burden onto those students? By even, and again, I, keeping in context, we're talking about a day, we're not talking about a year, we're not talking about weeks, we're talking about a day. But just, what ring, what resonates with me is, is just the number of times we've had teachers that have said, and you've said, and Jen has echoed, just says, every minute is just so crucial, it's not just every day, every minute is so crucial. That's where something like this, I, I wrestle with that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great question. You know, if you look at the Melrose document, and I wouldn't do it now, but it kind of accounts for, like, there's like a Q and A section, and they really talk about like, you know, all the things you're, you're asking about, like what if, you know, this happens, or what if that happens? And I think that, you know, a lot of the, I think a lot of the districts who've done this, the expectation isn't that like, say there's a, there's some, what do we assign in this? Assignment, assignment Y is put out to like a group of third graders. The expectation isn't that assignment Y gets turned in, say we have a snow day tomorrow, it isn't the expectation that it's turned in Monday. But there's some kind of lag time, so, you know, if students do need extra support, or there was like, at the secondary level, like a technology issue, because you lost your internet, or you lost electricity in your home, we're not, we're not penalizing kids for not completing work. They, they wouldn't be able to do because of some kind of circumstance.
Yeah.
So, for, for the purpose of tonight, this is just to introduce the concept, this isn't something that you've?
Yeah, so what I'm recommending, yeah, so what I'm recommending is we put a group together where, and I've, and I've spoke with the Milford Teachers Association too, and I think they're interested in exploring it as well, but coming up with some kind of proposal. Basically, looking at some of the models that are out there, see what could potentially work in Milford. And I would say, you know, maybe we look at piloting a day next year, if everybody can kind of come to an agreement on a way to do it. So, that's really what I'm proposing tonight, is not, not to actually necessarily execute the plan, but to come back maybe in a month or so and say, hey, we've looked at all these models, we've had some conversations, this is what we think, you know, would work in, in Milford. Or maybe we, we come back and say, you know what, either we're not ready to do it next year, or it's not gonna work in Milford.
And if you do end up moving forward, you're talking one, maybe two days as a?
Probably the first year, I would say, I would say one day. I, I don't think even if we were to put the program in full boat, I would say more than two days. And if you look at our last five years or so, we've probably, we had one bad winter, but the rest of them have been like three or four days.
Even that bad winter, we never got above four.
There's a lot of weekends, a lot of weekend storms.
Even that, that really bad winter in two thousand thirteen, where you're right, school districts were closing for days and days and days. We never, we didn't even hit five days that year, we hit the four.
So, I'm thinking if we're gonna do it, we probably just do it for one day next year, and then, you know, at max, two days.
I think, you know, I agree with you, Scott, I think theoretically, it is a good idea. And I think we don't often see a lot of flexibility in the Department of Education and the state. So, I think knowing that we have the flexibility and the option is great. I think putting together a committee and having all, you know, all levels represented, like Jen or Norganian would be a great person to the point about our, our population.
Obviously, want to specialize in the table too.
Yeah, I think one thing, I guess the first thing that I thought of was, I like the idea of planning and possibly getting ready for it. And I, maybe one of the questions that can be asked in the committee is, when would we use a day like this? So, would we use it when we were kind of at that tipping point of, well, we've already had three snow days, and now we're coming up to a fourth day, and it's, we're starting to encroach on that end of June, maybe that would be a time to pilot it, you know, because, you know, it is true, you'd rather see kids in front of a teacher than doing that. So, it just might be something for the committee to discuss, if, if we plan for it and have it in place and ready to go, when might we then want to execute it?
Correct, correct, do we do a day one, or do we do a day like six or seven?
Right, or we have five built in, right? We have five snow days kind of?
Yeah, theoretically.
Right, so, yeah.
I mean, and we're fortunate with the way we do our start times of the year, is that we've not, I mean, even in that really awful winter of two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, the, the budget requires us to be done by July first, January, June thirtieth, we're never, we've never even been close. We, because of the way we do our, that's why starting before every day, even getting those two days makes such a huge difference.
It's huge.
Because it does back that up at the end, beginning of the year. So, even with the five days, we're still not at risk of going to the June third, June thirtieth deadline from a logistical perspective. But I, I agree with you, Jen, I like the idea of, you, maybe you don't use, you know, I think when we test it, yeah, maybe you test it on the first snow day of the year, just to see how it goes. But if it were to be instituted, maybe it's not something that you do it on the first one, maybe it's not something you do on the second. You have that air cover that, all right, now we're starting to get closer to that timeline, and we have it in place where, you know what, we're ready to go, we have that, you know, the blizzard bag or whatever it is, that now we can, you know, it's a Friday, now we're risking, now we're gonna filter over into another full, another, another week at school, and that type of thing, so, I like that idea.
The timing of the snow day would dictate what the project is or the assignment is, right? So, would, would you develop something the day before, or would you?
I think, yeah, so I think at the elementary level, where we'd have to give, like, have a bag together, or like some kind of like packet together, or however it would work out, I think we'd have to have it planned ahead of time, and I think it would be based on kind of some key or critical standards. So, that's how we would do it at the elementary level. I think at the secondary level, you know, with, with technology, I think there's a lot of possibility. And again, I, we haven't really even gotten to that level of detail with the teachers, but I think then they, they would be just a continuation of whatever they're doing in classes, and they go through Google Classroom or whatever platform they're using.
I think that's what you need the committee for.
What's that?
You need, that's what you need the committee for.
Yeah, that's what we're the feedback we're coming in about.
And from a practical application, there's some teachers that are doing something similar to this already, where when there's an anticipated snow day for the next day, they know we've got a really bad weather storm coming or anything like that. These teachers will actually send the students home and say, if we come to school tomorrow, let's say there's a test planned, you'll have your test. If we don't come to school tomorrow, here is your assignment to do during the day, so that, that way it's not a lost day. So, it's, it's something to that effect, there's some teachers that are actually doing that already. They're basically doing it under the heading of, basically, if you will, alternative homework, if you will. So, it's the, hey, if school gets called, you gotta do this assignment while you're at home tomorrow. If you don't, if we're at school tomorrow, don't worry about it, so that way.
And that's particularly true where, you know, like in AP courses where they're up against the clock.
AP courses, some of your honors courses.
And they know that there's a deadline for the test, and it's, even if we had a day at the end, it's still a lost day that they're never getting back for preparation.
I look at it differently to Scott's point, I think what, what you, in a program, not necessarily at the elementary school, but at the secondary level, you empower the student to continue their education, even if it's, think about it, you call the school day, they're in front of the TV, you're playing video games all day long. So, even if they spend three hours doing some kind of schoolwork, it's a plus, it's, it's a plus.
And that's kind of the theory behind the.
But then I think you could take it one step further is, is again, at the secondary level, now a child's home sick, go on their Chromebook, communicate with their teacher, and the teacher say, here, you know, this is what we're gonna be working on today, so the educational process may not be minute-to-minute in front of the teacher, but it's better than just sitting at home, it's a way to continue your education during the daytime. You know, even if you're writing a report or something.
And this is one more way to make me wildly popular on snow days. And here's your work.
But that, that's an important point, I'm sure that, that will come out in your conversations at the, at the committee level. You know, it'd be great if the, if the expectation was that the teachers were available during the day to answer questions that students might have.
And that may be a model we go to, and there's, there's a, there's a lot of ways we could do that.
Yeah, that's the committee's job.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I, and I'm not even ready to get into that level of detail, but I wanted to kind of give you some broad strokes to kind of see. This is kind of a thought, we're seeing it happen as a movement across Massachusetts. I don't think all districts will be doing it in the next couple of years, but more and more districts are kind of, especially districts that have kind of a lot of technology like we do, are seeing the advantages of it.
Any other questions on that topic?
So, probably like a month, month and a half, I'll be back to kind of report out to you guys.
Good, good, definitely worth exploring, and it's a good segue to Craig and the school start time committee, because that's another topic very well worth exploring.
Thank you.
Sounded sincere.
It's your turn.
I do have two things to update, uh, the committee on, one is school start time. Uh, we had our first meeting of the, the committee that we put together, uh, last night. Uh, there's fifteen people on the committee, a mix of administrators, teachers, community members, parents, and students too. For our first meeting, basically what we wanted to do was, was answer some, uh, figure out what the questions are that we had around school start times, and try to figure out what kind of potential data we needed and questions answered. Uh, what we came up with is, we needed to know definitively, 'cause we were going back and forth, um, what the, the current start and end times are for our schools, um, pertinent research articles on the subject, how many high school, middle school students are expected to get younger siblings at the end of the day, start and end times from area, from districts in the area, how many districts in the area have made the recent change to their start and end times? They wanted to develop a survey for parents. I'm not sure how, how soon that will come out, um, I'm, I'm thinking that'll be in a few months anyways. Uh, absence, tardy and da, um, tardy and absence da, data from all of our schools, dropout data, um, potentially a study on traffic patterns in town, um, a discussion with community members and employers on how we can work together. Uh, in communities where start times have changed, do their kids actually go to sleep later? I mean, we talked about that, uh, at, at this committee. And how do schools with later start times deal with after-school activities like jobs, athletics, things like that? So for our next meeting, what we figured we would do is, is grab five pieces right off the bat to, to, to talk about, and that is going to be the start and end times, the, the data from the area districts, some research articles, some dropout data, and the absence and tardy data. So we're gonna unpack that in our meeting in March. And we are hoping to come to the, the committee in June with just basically our findings. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that?
Any questions for Craig? Is Dr. Perryhills on that?
Dr. Perryhills on that, yep.
Good.
Um, all right, so I, my next update is on Project Lead the Way. Uh, we had some exciting news over the last couple of weeks in the high school. Uh, Sisla Tucker had written three grants for the high school to get Project Lead the Way. We ended up winning two of them. So we ended up with fifty-five thousand dollars, um, a twenty thousand dollar grant for the Project Lead the Way Computer Science Module, and thirty-five thousand for the Project Lead the Way, um, Biomedical Science Module. So those will be rolling into high school next year, uh, they're already in the program of studies. The idea is to have a track so that students can have a, uh, three, three courses in a row. I think we're gonna start with the, with one course for each of those, and then build it as we go. It's exciting because these courses will translate into college credits once kids complete the courses. Uh, not to all colleges, it's like two hundred colleges, I think, in the, in the country, one being WPI. So, um, we have, we have teachers that are already on board, they have to go to, um, WPI over the summer to complete two weeks of training for that. But good news for us, and, and Josh and, and Sisla are really excited about it. So I think, um, for our kids, this is the right direction to go. Uh, and also with Project Lead the Way, Wendy Marino was asked to be on a panel for Project Lead the Way at WPI on, on the night, they have a, um, a convening, uh, all the Project Lead the Way schools come and, and talk about how it's going, and if anybody has questions, and they asked her to be on, so I think that's exciting for us, and I, and I think, I think Wendy and Cory are, are getting into it and figuring out how Project Lead the Way is working, and I think it's only gonna help the high school progression, so. I don't know if anybody has questions about that?
Any questions?
I have just one, so essentially, and I'm sorry, because you probably talked about this before, this is a science-based curriculum that's connected specifically to WPI?
Not specifically.
Okay.
WPI is one of, I think it's two hundred universities that kind of sponsors Project Lead the Way.
Okay.
So in Massachusetts, I, WPI might be the only school in Massachusetts that sponsors it, and a lot of all their professional development is run out of WPI.
Okay.
But I'm not sure that's exactly connected to WPI.
So essentially, it's course offerings at the high school level?
Right.
That are different from what we are offering right now?
Right, so, so with, with the biomedical, there's, there's, I, I'm not sure of the name of the courses, but they could potentially take the place of anatomy and physiology, but they're the same kinds of courses.
Yeah, okay.
But then would translate into college credit.
Got it, that's great.
Craig, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, Project Lead the Way is the, the STEM curriculum that we use at Woodland in middle school, and Stacy today, right? So this would be a continuation of that into the high school?
Right, so at, at Woodland, they use the Project Lead the Way Launch, and then it goes into the Gateway, and then it goes into the high school, but the high school has different tracks. So we have biomedical, the computer science, and the, the one, I can't remember the, the name of, uh, oh, the engineering one is the one that we didn't get the grant for, um, but we're gonna try again next year, and we'll probably get it next year. They had limited funds, they, we, they talked to us about it, and they said that, um, they were, our grants were favorable, they just couldn't give us all three, and they asked us, you know, you gotta pick two, so it goes out here.
That's great.
Great.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Thank you for your work on that.
All right, thanks Craig, anything else from your perspective?
Nope, I'm, I'm all set.
Nice job.
The committee is closed.
Closed.
All right, Kathy, um, you're up next.
Uh, for the committee this evening, I have eight warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred, thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
We have a motion, motion from Mike, seconded by Jim, all in favor.
The second warrant is in the amount of three hundred, sixty thousand, six hundred, thirty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Motion from John, seconded by Scott, all in favor.
Third warrant is in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred, fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
Motion from Jen, seconded by Joe, all in favor.
The fourth warrant is in the amount of one hundred, nineteen thousand, five hundred, ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion from Scott, seconded by John, all in favor.
The next warrant is in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred, seventy-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Motion from Mike, seconded by Jen, all in favor.
The next warrant is in the amount of one hundred, forty-eight thousand, seven hundred, eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents.
Motion from Joe, seconded by Jim, all in favor.
The next warrant is in the amount of four hundred, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars and ninety-one cents.
Motion from John, seconded by Scott, all in favor.
The last warrant is in the amount of two hundred, forty-three dollars and seven cents.
We have a motion, motion from Jim, seconded by Joe, all in favor.
Uh, the committee has a list of the latest appointments and hires from our previous meeting, no vote is required, it's for your information only. We do have a course reimbursement request, uh, in the amount of one thousand, five hundred, thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Okay, do we have motion, accept motion from Mike, seconded by Jim, all in favor.
And lastly, there are a few gifts.
Do have some gifts, all right. So the first gift is from the Milford High School class of nineteen seventy-eight, in memory of Susan Dulac, in the amount of twenty-five dollars for high school special education. We have a motion, motion from John, seconded by Scott, all in favor. Next gift is from Barbara Cataldo, also in memory of Susan Dulac, for a high school special education, in the amount of twenty-five dollars. I have a motion, motion from Joe, seconded by Jen, all in favor. And we have another gift in memory of Susan Dulac from John Morty, um, also for a high school special education, in the amount of one hundred dollars. So we have a motion to accept, motion from Mike, seconded by Jim, all in favor. And then we have another gift in the amount of twenty-five dollars from Lynn Patton for the, um, family network. We have a motion to accept, motion from Scott, seconded by John, all in favor. Thank you very much, some very generous gifts, appreciate that. Okay, any other updates, Kathy?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, we did have one subcommittee meeting, the policy subcommittee meeting met tonight before the meeting, um, do you want to give me a bit?
Sure, so, we did have a meeting, um, we really had one policy that we were reviewing, I, I apologize. Yeah, really one policy that we're reviewing that's gonna ultimately come for a reading. This is the nondiscrimination on the basis of gender identity. Uh, we did go through, this is actually a, a newly, a newly created policy that we're, we're gonna make some changes to, just get, and, and really get in place. This is different, we recently did a review for, um, discrimination on the basis of gender. This is based on gender identity, which is a different policy, so, um, things that were, so we'll, we'll have a, we'll be ready for, it looks like, I think, probably a first reading, Jen, probably, probably not the next meeting, but probably the first meeting in April.
Yeah.
It's probably when the first reading would come up, so. Uh, there were some changes that we, we took a look at, um, Judy Dagnes was, attended the meeting. Um, we did have council take a look at it, we proposed some changes to it, um, and then we're gonna send it back. Council will take a look at it again, then we'll have a, we'll review it and have it ready for a, a first reading, probably in the first week of April.
Okay.
The other thing was really just more of an FYI. Uh, this does not require a vote by us, but Judy Dagnes did say that she just, she went through and she updated, um, just some of the, uh, the nursing, not the protocols, but just the form, she just did some updating to the forms, the forms were a little bit dated. She basically cut the form from four pages down to one, um, just consolidating, doesn't require our, our approval, but, uh, Judy just wanted to pass that along to us, and I told her to pass it along. So I've, I've got a copy of the current as well as what the, what she's going to change it to. Doesn't require our vote or any changes on our part, it's just the form in general, so I'll pass that along for everyone to just take a quick peek at.
What's the purpose of that form?
It's just for medication, it's when students have to send medication to school for nurses to, um, for the nurses to administer during the day.
Okay.
There's forms that need to be filled out by physicians, um, and she just went through and just consolidated some of the forms. But it's, it's a, it's a form, it's not a, it's not a policy change for us.
Okay.
Uh, and that was really it, those were the, um, those are the two, that was really the big policy that's coming up for consideration in the, in the month of April. That was really the, the prux of the conversation tonight.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Future agenda items, does anyone have any future agenda items? Jim?
Um, I, I know that we've talked the last day, so, um, with the recent events that have happened in the media, um, would it be wise to look at our policy to find out what it would be, um, if students were to walk out and protest, how the school or our district handles those type of things? I don't know if there's a current policy in it, I don't know if there's something we want to look at. Kids are just, you know, not, they're doing whatever, but they're getting more and more vocal, and I'm sure that a lot of things would happen sooner or later that they're gonna walk out and protest, all in good nature, I'm sure. How do we handle that if that does happen? Parents know what's going on, do they leave school grounds, this is, uh, maybe that'll be something we will bring up in the future again.
So can I just respond to that quickly, Joe, just that? We met as a leadership team today and kind of talked about, because there's a nationwide kind of planned protest on March fourteenth, and there'll be communication coming from, um, the middle school and high school principal, and it's gonna be, um, I think, consistent communication. We're also working with the Milford Police Department to kind of, you know, look at potential, um, contingencies, you know, if, if there's, whether it's a small event or, or potentially a larger event. Um, I do think it's something worth discussing at the policy level as well, but our next, uh, school committee meeting, which we need a policy meeting after the March fourteenth.
Right, that's fine, I just feel that.
Yeah, 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 but I just wanted to say that, so parents should, should expect a communication in terms of what our expectations are.
Okay.
Um, probably sometime next week.
Thank you.
Just to, can I add to that for a moment?
Yeah.
Um, I don't, have we, we haven't met since what happened in Florida, but, um, we have?
Yeah, right afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the communications, I think, at least so I've, as a parent, seen the communication from the middle school principal, the high school principal, and from you. And, you know, I think it's important for people to understand that those communications are so valuable to us as families to know that the district is talking about these things, that plans are being put into place. And I think the consistency of those communications, so to your point about whatever's coming next, is so helpful. So families know it's not just MHS doing something, or Stacy doing something, but everyone is talking and planning in collaboration with our town safety personnel. Um, that's, that's been very helpful, at least from a parent perspective.
I think the, the focus that the committee's placed on mental health and social emotional learning over the past year, a few years, I, I think is very reassuring as well, that we've been focused on that, we continue to be focused on that as we go through the budget process, there are a number of positions there that, um, are specifically to address mental health issues and social emotional issues. So, um, you know, obviously we want to continue to do everything that we can in, in that regard, and also want to continue to do everything we can to secure our, our buildings. And the email you sent out to the families this week, I think you did a good job explaining all the steps that we've taken, and I know we have a great partnership with the, the police force here in Milford, and, um, you know, they, they provide a lot of support as well, so.
Well, I think what's important.
Oh, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
I think what's important too, Mr. Chairman, is that, uh, when Dr. Tremely was here, we brought that consultant team in, uh, who was a, uh, active police officer himself, and one of the things he brought up is that they know for a fact, using Collebine High School years ago, those children waited to be executed because they were taught the old school. Everybody gets locked down, get in a closet, get under a desk, whatever. And they use Newtown, Connecticut, as the new example, is we have to make sure that we teach our students, um, two methods of lockdown. If the threat is internal, you flight. And, and he used as an example, one little boy they found, he actually got through the woods, they found him out on a main road, but all he knew was the threat was internal and to, and to get out. And he said, you can never stress that enough, is that you gotta have organization in the school. So some poor students go into the library or whatever, and now it happens. They have to be able to think on their own and say, how am I getting out of here because the threat is internal? If the threat is external, then you lock the building down. And he said, it's imperative, and he, he talked about it all the time, you have to educate your faculty and your students to know what is the, like a fire drill. What are you doing a fire drill? And that's key, it's key.
And, Mr. Chairman, that comes under, you know, whether it's future agenda items, we brought this up at the, at the last meeting in February, with just reviewing, um.
And we'll be doing that at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, okay, good, I just want to make sure that we were gonna be doing, just reviewing, what are the steps that we have taken? Because it's been significant, making sure that we're continuing to revisit that, how are we creating an environment where, yes, to your point, Mike, we're educating them on what happens when the threat's internal and, and training on that, but also around, you know, encouraging our students to, how do they make sure that we have the right, how do we make sure that we've created the right environment in the schools where, hey, this isn't just Johnny being Johnny, there's something I'm seeing here I'm uncomfortable with, or I'm seeing something that isn't right, and making sure that we've created that environment where there's, there's that comfort level. So I, I'm glad to see that we're doing that at the next, the next meeting in two weeks.
And, and one thing I failed to bring up during announcements correspondence, uh, but just as, as a reminder, we do have the social emotional, um.
Oh, that's right.
Curriculum and bullying, uh.
March thirteenth.
Form coming up on March thirteenth, so, um, I've members of the community are certainly invited to learn more about the social emotional learning, um, curriculum as well as what we're doing in terms of anti-bullying efforts. All right, any other future agenda items? Any old business? No business, and there's no executive session tonight? No executive session, uh, so do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion from Mike, seconded by Jim, all in favor. Thank you, have a good night.